And then Jerome talking to his little girl. It's not her brother that comes to the house and she didn't talk to the girls. She didn't, she doesn't come back. So we just said, at this point, what's one more gonna matter?
Load them up.
Oh, no. Hey, Mr. Brown.
Congratulations, Eric.
Thank you. Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
You did well. You got tough race. You got no conflict in your history, did you? You too.
Chairman Doherty, please. We may not think she has full time station in our whole county mission, but maybe I'll... Call her up, please, Mr. Brown.
Peter Peter.
Here.
Willie Campbell.
Here.
Lawrence Hodge.
Here.
Nancy Brown here. Joel Street. Richard Winner.
Here.
Ronnie Cribb.
Here.
Mary Sis.
President.
Charles Van Cannon.
President.
Elsie Testor.
Here.
Steve Ray.
President.
Tom Bowers.
Here.
Joanne Lichtenship.
Present.
Charlie Bailey.
Here.
Bobby Dees.
Present.
Ken Arden. Steve Chambers.
Here.
John Lewis.
Here.
Sonia Coler.
Present.
Russell Cott.
Here.
Scott Sands.
Here.
Bill Armstrong.
Here.
Pat Hicks.
President.
Robert Goff.
Here.
Four present.
Now we'll have our opening prayer from Mr. Luke Campbell. Stand.
Dear God, we've got our heads today, Lord, approached with rum and grace. God, we want to thank you for this beautiful day, Lord, and forgive us. God, another opportunity, Lord, to put our feet to the floor, give you honor and praise. Lord, we do pray, Lord, for this committee, Lord, we pray for each one who represents this county, Lord. We pray, Lord, to seek your wisdom, your knowledge, Lord, and view, Lord, we know that we can make the right decision. Lord, we do pray, God, for each and everything that's been done in this meeting, Lord. Lord, we praise you today, God, for what you've done for each one of us. Lord, we know, God, that there's trouble on every hand because you told your own disciples, let not your hearts be troubled. Lord, we know today that troubles on every hand. We know, Lord, that your plans laid out there, and God, we know that you're gonna take care of each and every one of us. Lord, we thank you for your grace, because you said your grace was sufficient to one of all. Lord, this morning, we give you honor and praise, and as these things are thy made. Amen.
Have a pledge of allegiance to Mr. Brown, too. Attention, salute, wait.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go any further, I omitted one item from the agenda, and if so, take two off. We'll amend that to down on, right after number thirteen, we have a report from Mr. Scott Sands, our chairman of the records committee. So, okay.
Scott, what did I say?
Scott, you're on my mind, Scott. All right. Now we have the presentation of elected and appointed officials and the eight guests. Your own files, please. Now we have a presentation of a plaque to the Card County Constables Association. Mr. Arden is supposed to do that, and I'll ask Mr. Bowers if he will do that at this time. If the constables will come forward, please. I know this isn't all of our castles, but a lot of our castles, like everybody else, have jobs that they have to attend to, but we appreciate these folks, please.
Mr. Arden asked that we present a plaque for the Constable Association today, and correct thing to do, special recognition for the hard work, dedication, countless hours that you all provide. I know that we've not been in many sporting events in this county, that we've not saw our constables there to make sure that cooler air prevail, patrol the roads, keeping safety now for all of our homes, and we appreciate everyone who did this community, and I don't think it goes unnoticed. And, you know, I grew up in Platteville, because I'm on my games in that, so I know what you guys can do, and appreciate every effort you guys have done. I'm happy to commission to build this plaque.
Thanks, sir.
Which one of you two guys got drafted, or else I might have to notice you.
First of all, I'm speaking for all the constables in the county. We appreciate you. It's nice knowing you. We are appreciative. Everything we do is mostly out of our pocket, but there's only here to complain about, because we enjoy doing it. We love this county, we love the people in it, and, like I said, thank you very much. We appreciate all the help from the sheriff's office, the police departments, and the support of the A twenty guys. We appreciate it very much. Thank you. Thank you, Rob. Just to bring to your attention, this is one elected officer that never comes from the budget committee, which has been asked for anything, but I thought I did, but it was out of our pocket. All right, now, we'll come to item seven, couple of comments. Do we have anybody who wish to make these couple of comments? Mr. Richardson.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I have opportunity to be in the budget committee, and the budget committee voted on Card County tomorrow exempting their rent for the next four years. And I don't think anybody had the details of what was really going on. I know for a fact that I'm a site bidder, and we have a field up there that we rent from Card County tomorrow, and pay them rent monthly, yearly, quarterly. And I don't think anybody asked any questions, because I didn't know to, but you need to check this out closely, because if we're gonna exempt the rent to them, and then they rent out to somebody else, what is really going on? And I think before you vote on this, or whatever the date, you need to ask some questions. You need to know what the background on this thing is, because if this is jumping out and voting for something, you have no idea what it is, you know, that's where all the money's for. And, of course, you know, all of us know right now we're in trouble money-wise, county is. And I would say that if something come up, you had a real big problem right now, and you'd be in more trouble. But you need to, you need to understand about this and ask some questions, and see if you can find out exactly what you're voting on before you vote. If you exempt them for four years, and that's my understanding, forty-one thousand a year, that's a hundred and sixty-four thousand bucks you're just gonna slide. But it'd be my opinion that you ask some questions and understand what's going on before you vote. Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Anybody else have any couple of comments? Seeing none, we'll move on. We have a presentation by Mr. Charles Curtis, who is the brand-new executive director of the Tennessee County Commissioner's Association.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members. I won't take up a couple, three minutes of your time. I got up at three o'clock this morning, elected at three thirty, so I came up here and see you folks. And the Lord blessed me, and I had a safe trip. But the main reason I'm trying to get to see the conditions is I want you to know who I am and what I am, and I want you to feel comfortable calling me. I've interacted with a couple, I'd be already, but I laid a card at everyone's workstation to certainly try to, if you need me, I'm just a resource. I don't know it all. I promise you, I don't know it all. I know where a lot of the bodies are buried, but I certainly don't know it all. But I've got the resources, you know? I work very closely with the C task, and I served ten terms in the legislature, so I've got a lot of resources to help you if you've got questions or something. If you call me, ask me something personally, it'll stay between you and I. I'm not gonna advertise so-and-so calling, asking, I'm not gonna do that. It's like I lived half my life getting ready for this. I've served under county commission, I served as a county executive, and then I was elected to the legislature in ninety-four. One of the first encounters I had when I got to legislature in ninety-four was Ralph Cole, which came from his county. And I wanna tell you a story about Ralph. I'm a contractor, I'm a bricklayer, but trade, and all my life I've tried. And my wife would get up every morning to fix my breakfast. If I got up at four, by four-thirty, my breakfast would be on the table. And then I'd drive to Nashville, and Ralph was an early rusher, and I'd be him in the cafeteria at the legislature, he'd be in his breakfast around a few more people. The morning when they said, why don't you grab your breakfast? I said, boys, my mom, my wife gets up and fixes me biscuits, and gravy, and ham, and eggs every morning before I leave the house. And about a week, my wife quit cooking. Only breakfast I get now is on Sunday morning. And I don't know that I get to heaven, whether it was Ralph or who it was, but I've always suspicion Ralph's one didn't eat. But I want you to know I loved Ralph Cole, and Kent Williams, I've had a real good work for the relationship, and I truly love Ralph Cole, and I miss him. But you've been well represented ever since I've been in Nashville. And I'll hush, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna thank you for the opportunity to come and talk to you, and if you need to call me at one or two o'clock in the morning, you're welcome to call me. But I'm not gonna lie to you, my wife will be mad for days if you call me at one or two o'clock in the morning. I may miss a few of y'all. I'm gonna leave a few cards right here on the corner, but please, if I can be of any assistance, give me a call. I promise you, I don't know it all, but if I can help you, I will. Y'all have a wonderful day. I'm gonna give you two things, and I'm sixty-seven years old, and I've learned a couple things that I live by. One's biblical, and the other one's just something I stumbled across, and this is the one I stumbled across. Speak one of your enemies. You made it. I hope you understand how profound that statement is I just made. And the last one I'm gonna give you is biblical. If you have to twist or turn the truth to get what you want, the Lord's not in it. If you have to twist or turn the truth to get what you want, I promise you, God is not in it. Y'all have a wonderful day, and God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. We appreciate it. I think it's great that you drove all those way just to introduce yourself and let us know you'd be happy to help us if we need. Anyway, now we'll have the acceptance of the minutes from our previous meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hicks, second by Mr. Bowers to accept the minutes in discussion. All in favor of their aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Now we have our no reason boss, Madam Clerk.
Anna Emeka, Wilma Hamilton, Alan Michael Potts, Susan Trumay, Ashley Levine, Lisa Mora, Kevin Knuckle, Ben Hawkins, Pete Gelford, Ben Samuel Lee Lewis, Daisy Gregory, June Johnson, Dana Cooper, Barbara Arlison, Kevin A. Brian Stagg, Cameron Martin, Mary Arby, Art Tom, Dennis Fair, Judy Sluder, Rebecca K. Street, Deborah Arndt, Christy Demos, Nancy Evans, Bobby G. Paul, Matt H. Foot Jr., Kate Allen, Teresa Simmons, Willie May Taylor, Julie Peterson, and not on their list, Regina Chambers.
I have a motion to accept.
I make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Richard Lewis, second by Mr. Kat.
Chairman.
To accept that list in discussion. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Now, can your package to find a list of additions and deletions to property tax row? Do we have any questions about that?
I make a motion to accept the committee's.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Crigg, second by Mr. Blackenship to accept the additions and deletions to property tax row. Is there any discussion? Mr. Luke Campbell.
For the second, at least third year in a row, we're losing three times more small business than is being generated. This desert, on the bottom line, I don't know if I'd answer this, if you're losing money in actually growing businesses, but it looks as though the entrepreneurship of this county has been declining, and small business is where it's happening. Everybody knows that. Job generation is due to small business as opposed to in the majority business. Are we business friendly? I hope so. Is the city business friendly? We hope so, because we can't continue to decline our property tax the way it is, because that's a source of revenue that we're missing.
Thank you, Mr. Luke Campbell. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Now we'll have the, in your package, you'll find three applications for the position of judicial commissioner. At this time, we'll have an election to that office. When the rolls call, answer with the name of the person you wish to vote for, and being mentioned.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
If they're taking up there, would like to say a word to do that, like here, what they have to say.
Okay, just a sec. Let's say, when you, when the rolls call, answer with the person you wish to vote for, seeing that there's three. If at the end of the first vote, we do not have a majority, the lowest vote getter will be dropped, and they'll vote him. Yes, ma'am?
On the last discussion that we had, and voted on, since that is money adding to the county and taking away from the county, shouldn't there be a roll call?
We could certainly go back and call her up if we'd like.
I just didn't want to start a little bit.
Did you think that'd be appropriate?
I think.
We can go back, and we'll call her up. This is to accept the additions and deletions to the property tax.
Peter Peter.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Lawrence Hodge.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winner.
Aye.
Ronnie Cribb.
Aye.
Mary Sis.
Aye.
Charles Van Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Testor.
Aye.
Steve Ray.
Aye.
Tom Bowers.
Aye.
Joanne Lichtenship.
Aye.
Charlie Bailey.
Aye.
Bobby Dees.
Aye.
Ken Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonia Coler.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Pat Hicks.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried, again. Thank you, Mr. Blackenship. Now, I'll open the floor for nominations for judicial commissioners. So we have a nomination.
Anderson.
Have a nomination for Mr. Anderson, or any other nomination?
I'll nominate Winner.
Nomination for Mr. Winner. Any other nomination? Nomination to be closed, and we will consider these to, yes, sir?
I'd like to recommend Mr. Anderson.
Well, he's already been recommended. All right, we'll just have two nominations then. Mr. Anderson's here, would you like to say a word, Mr. Anderson?
I think I almost, I'm ready to answer, I'm served, served a president for Ted Walton as a temporary official commissioner, and I'm currently my two and four commissioner. I'm confident, well, I'll put in a job, and I worked last month, but for Mr. Hudson to resign, I worked this week, and I worked, I don't work last night, because the commission went up. But I can do the job, I know the job, and I like the job, and it's, I mean, something to do, and it's, I enjoy it, and I've performed very well for you, the county, the people, and the best job I can.
You. Mr. Winner's, I don't see him in the audience, but you can see by his application, he has a background in law enforcement, twenty-five years with Elizabethan Police Department. Several of those was with Drug Task Force, where he was the director, and says he was familiar with all aspects of the judicial system. So, when the rolls call, please answer with Mr. Anderson or Mr. Winner's name.
Peter Peter.
Anderson.
Willie Campbell.
Anderson.
Lawrence Hodge.
Anderson.
Nancy Brown.
Anderson.
Joel Street.
Winner's.
Richard Winner's.
Winner's.
Ronnie Cribb.
Anderson.
Mary Sis.
Anderson.
Charles Van Cannon.
Mr. Anderson.
Elsie Testor.
Anderson.
Steve Ray.
Winner's.
Tom Bowers.
Winner's.
Joanne Lichtenship.
Winner's.
Charlie Bailey.
Winner's.
Bobby Dees.
Winner's.
Ken Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Anderson.
Sonia Coler.
Winner's.
Russell Cott.
Winner.
Scott Sands.
Anderson.
Bill Armstrong.
Winner's.
Pat Hicks.
Winner's.
Robert Goff.
Anderson.
Fourteen for Mr. Winner's, nine for Mr. Anderson. We'll notify Mr. Winner's. Yeah, I think we will. Thank you, y'all. Next, we'll be a resolution to recognize the letter grant for two thousand fourteen and fifteen. Do I have a motion to waive the reading of the letter grant?
I make a motion to waive the reading of the resolution.
Okay.
Back.
Motion by Mr. Hicks, second by Mr. Kat, to waive the reading of the resolution. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? No's. As the record show, we have one no for Mr. Brooks. Now, do I have a motion to accept the letter grant?
I make a motion to accept the letter grant.
Second. I have a motion for Mr. Blackenship, second by Mr. Testor, to accept the letter grant as presented. Any discussion? Call her up.
Peter Peter.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Lawrence Hodge.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winner's.
Aye.
Ronnie Cribb.
Aye.
Mary Sis.
Aye.
Charles Van Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Testor.
Aye.
Steve Ray.
Aye.
Tom Bowers.
Aye.
Joanne Lichtenship.
Aye.
Charlie Bailey.
Aye.
Bobby Dees.
Aye.
Ken Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonia Coler.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Pat Hicks.
Aye.
And Robert Goff.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Now we'll have a report from Mr. Scott Bowers.
Good morning, gentlemen. If you have an opportunity, before you leave here today, to look down by the Ford American Round Display case, we had a fantastic donation made by Robert Collins of Stone Creek. She was a forty-eight-year employee. They've both been burned in the American Round, and she donated a fantastic display. And I've got that set up right now for everybody, so next week, I will be adding actual instruments that were used from the stripes by the union, and it is gonna be a very interesting thing for people to come. The Women's Civil War buffs, May twenty-ninth, at the library, from six p.m. to eight p.m., we'll be doing a little Civil War Roundtable in the Ullman, to help find people, their ancestors that might have fought for the Union or the Confederate Army, and so we hope everybody comes out for that. In your package, there should be a letter remaining on behalf of the soldiers in the Union. As you know, last year, our soldiers' monument turned one hundred, and we had a pretty good celebration for that. It's actually not done yet. We commissioned to have two stones made. One is a replica of the original. The original, we had hoped, could be restored back on the monument. It's way too fragile, so that's not gonna happen, so we commissioned to have a replica that made. And we also have another one made that, for future generations to see that we all came out, we honored our veterans, and that we can celebrate the monument's celebration. The Historic Zoning Commission, I got approval from them last November to have this done. These only created two, their specifications, they will be flushed into the ground there on standing monuments. That's caused issues in the past. It was approved by them. The same request is going in front of the city, and the city has asked that I come report to county commission for approval to have this placed in the ground, or tarred in the east side of the monument. So essentially, I'm here to humble the request, as somebody make a motion to have those placed at that monument.
I so moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Street, second by Mr. Sands, to approve the placing of these stones at the monument. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. And if you find this an opportunity, go by the board. Chad Bower approved, put on another wonderful display this year of siege, and all the talk. These people put their heart and soul into it, their own monetary contributions to make this happen, and thank you, and it makes them feel good, and makes them wanna do it. Thank you all.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes?
Before he steps down, I'd just like to say that I feel that we've been very fortunate to have Mr. Bowers restored, the work he does, and the job he's done since he's done this, has, is greatly appreciated. And I just wanted to thank you for everything you've done for this county, and the hard work we've put in.
It's my honor, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you for your job. Now we'll have the mayor's report.
Mr. Chairman, the mayor has no report.
Thank you, mayor. Now we'll have the committee reports. The legislative committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget committee, add-on question, and we'll fill down the list of amendments and whatever action was taken and recommended that's full by the go down. First thing we have is a list of donations that have been received and designated for the animal shelter, animal clean team, included in our candidates. You have a copy of those minutes in your folder. So I make a motion to accept the donations totaling eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars, seventy-one cents. So I make a motion to accept the donations totaling $828.71 for the animal shelter and $1,000 to the county.
I have a motion by Mr. Street, second by Mr. Brown to accept these donations.
I'll say it.
Mr. Brown, already said. Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Speaker Peter.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Lawrence Hodge.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Trevitt. Harry Sis.
Aye.
Charles Moncannon.
Aye.
Elsie Testor.
Aye.
Stephen Ray.
Aye.
Tom Bowers.
Aye.
Joanne Lincolnship.
Aye.
Charlie Baker.
Aye.
Bobby Dees.
Aye.
Ken Arden. Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonia Coler.
Aye.
Russell Cye.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Pat Hicks.
Aye.
And Robert Goff.
Aye. All ayes, motion carried.
The next item was amendment to the contract for housing state prisoners. Was voted down by the committee. And this amendment would increase the state's maximum liability. Copy of the amendment was included in the Budget Committee minutes. I make a motion to accept the amendment to state in late contract as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sis, second by Mr. Moncannon, to accept the amendment to the contract. Is there any discussion?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Sis.
Yeah.
Now, is the contract, they raised it from $35 to $37, is that what you got?
No. This is a liability on you.
Any other discussion?
Do I call down? Are we just talking about one border, or are we just talking about health expenses?
It's, it's a... This amendment increases the state's maximum liability to $196,200 for fiscal year 2014-15.
If you read on the amendment that's in your packet, it'll tell you exactly what it's for, the maximum liability. The payment rates include, but are not limited to, all applicable taxes, fees, overheads, and all other direct and indirect costs incurred, or to be incurred by the contractor, that's us. That's on the second page of that amendment under maximum liability.
Question. Question mark, call roll.
Speaker Peter.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Lawrence Hodge.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Trevitt.
Aye.
Harry Sis.
Aye.
Charles Moncannon.
Aye.
Elsie Testor.
Aye.
Stephen Ray.
Aye.
Tom Bowers.
Aye.
Joanne Lincolnship.
Aye.
Charlie Baker.
Aye.
Bobby Dees.
Aye.
Ken Arden. Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonia Coler.
Aye.
Russell Cye.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Pat Hicks.
Aye.
And Robert Goff.
Aye.
The government's vote, man? Yes, I thought it said $3 million on the contract.
That's the five years. If you look, that's a total of five years.
Twenty-two ayes, motion carried.
Okay. Next item, Ken Eggers from the Workforce Development Complex, presented the need for a new roof on the back building of the complex. This building houses northeast State, some of their classes. She stated that the roof is estimated to cost approximately $152,000. Currently, the county receives rental income from the complex of $41,000 per year. She requested that the rent be forgiven until the roof is paid off. They have several bids for replacing the roof, with pricing for a 15-year warranty being $152,000. The original roof is allowing water to enter the building. Part of it has been replaced at a cost of $49,000. So the Budget Committee recommended, and I make a motion, to forgive the workforce development's rent for four years, allowing for a new roof to be purchased for building number two.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sis, second by Ms. Blackenship, to forgive the rent on this building for four years so they can replace the roof. Mr. Lewis?
Mr. Sis?
Yeah.
I'm kind of confused here. I thought the county mayor would go through all these county buildings. Why didn't they go through him to have all this roof being replaced? That's the county building, then?
Well, the county owns it, yes.
Well, I thought we were going to hear more about giving the mayor authority over all the county buildings. So why did, and, and, I thought we don't have an estimate on a package for offering estimates. And I also think we don't have a requirement of attendance, having how much rent they pay, who owns in that building that's here. If we're going to take the taxpayer's dollars and have this go down, I can tell about it in capital more than the savings.
Thank you.
Can someone answer that question, Paul? Why, why is the mayor over this building?
Maybe the mayor can answer it.
I think this commission should have the answer, from my understanding, several years ago. There was an agreement made with the Workforce Complex. I have researched that myself, Mr. Lewis, just the last few days. I cannot find the agreement between the county commission and that complex as to who would be responsible for it. I've searched down in the clerk's office. We do have minutes that reflect that there was an agreement made for the sale of that property. There's nothing in the registered deeds office either as to indicate that that agreement was actually put on record. So that is a question, and who is responsible? And I think that's something that needs to be answered.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Do you have any, do you have a clue how much rent money is coming in on that?
Do not have a clue. And that's something that I would have thought the commission would have asked for. You know, you need to know how much rent's coming in. It's a very large complex. You've got hundreds of thousands of dollars coming in. Of course, there's a maintenance, enough heat. But again, it goes back to that original agreement, and it's not been questioned in many, many years. We're going back to one plus years.
They pay $41,000 a year, is that correct?
Yes.
Right.
Chairman.
I did cooperate the other night to, and it does affect the northeast State. And I hope we realize how many, how many students that we have from Porter County and other counties that are attending that school up there. Plus, I figured in with what the new law that the governor just passed here several weeks ago, of where students will get their tuition free for the first two years, that this is going to be a boon for this, for this college up here. Now, we are very fortunate to have that. It was a lot of hard work that went in to get northeast State up here. Now, they're opening up, they're getting ready to open up the downtown center in Johnson City, the northeast over there. I would hate, after all the hard work that went in to get this college up here, to live there. I mean, we don't care to go here across the street and put a new roof on, on another jail. I think that, that building up there is burning bad to the rest, to the people of Porter County. So I would hope that we would, that we would do this.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. Any other discussion? The motion is to forgive the rent for three to four years so they can replace the roof off. Call roll, please.
Speaker Peter.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Lawrence Hodge.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Too many unanswered questions, no.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Trevitt.
Aye.
Harry Sis.
Aye.
Charles Moncannon.
Aye.
Elsie Testor.
Aye.
Stephen Ray.
Aye.
Tom Bowers.
Aye.
Joanne Lincolnship.
Aye.
Charlie Baker.
Aye.
Bobby Dees.
Aye.
Ken Arden. Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
No.
Sonia Coler.
Aye.
Russell Cye.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
No.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Pat Hicks.
Scott.
Robert Goff.
No. Not seen ayes, motion carried.
Next item is, motion to approve General Purchase School Fund 141, Amendment Number Five. One item totaling $16,507.23, zero coming from fund balance. On the last three items. The Budget Committee made a recommendation that we approve this, and I make that motion this time.
I have a, I have a motion by Mr. Sis, second by Mr. Hodge, to approve these minutes. Any discussion?
Mr. Sis?
Yes.
You said there's $82,000 coming from the general fund.
Yes.
Now, here we go again, going back to the well, keep busting, general fund and debt service. So somewhere down the road, you're going to have to pay again.
That's true. We don't have insurance.
Any other discussion? And the, for your, after your question, $17,000 is for additional legal services, $35,000 for additional funds for the trustees commission, and $30,000 for the juvenile detention center. It costs quite a bit to have a juvenile state over there, and we haven't budgeted that much. Call roll, please.
Speaker Peter.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Lawrence Hodge.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Because I'm employed in Porter County, I have conflict with Anderson, proposal about to be voted, however, part of my argument, my vote nature, only in my conscience, and to my obligations to my constituents and my citizens, this body represents aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Trevitt.
No.
Harry Sis.
Aye.
Charles Moncannon.
No.
Elsie Testor.
Aye.
Stephen Ray.
Aye.
Tom Bowers.
Aye.
Joanne Lincolnship.
Aye.
Charlie Baker.
Aye.
Bobby Dees.
Aye.
Ken Arden. Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
No.
Sonia Coler.
Aye.
Russell Cye.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Pat Hicks.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
No. Not seen ayes, motion carried.
The next item is, involves health department, some water damage and insurance reimbursement for that. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
$694.11, zero coming from fund balance.
I have a motion from Mr. Sis, second, Ms. Brown to approve this, those in the matter.
Mr. Sis?
Yes.
What kind of water damage did we have? Did it run off? Did we have to break inside? Or wasn't this water damage coming from? Do you have any idea?
I can answer that for you. It was a waterline break in the ANX. When it's sub-zero temperature, the waterline froze and busted, and that caused the damage.
Okay. And the insurance don't pay it?
The insurance did pay it, and that's what you're recognizing.
Recognize insurance reimbursement. Any other discussion? Call roll, please.
Speaker Peter.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Lawrence Hodge.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Trevitt.
Aye.
Harry Sis.
Aye.
Charles Moncannon.
Aye.
Elsie Testor.
Aye.
Stephen Ray.
Aye.
Tom Bowers.
Aye.
Joanne Lincolnship.
Aye.
Charlie Baker.
Aye.
Bobby Dees.
Aye.
Ken Arden. Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonia Coler.
Aye.
Russell Cye.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Pat Hicks.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye. All ayes, motion carried.
The next item is, motion to approve General Purchase School Fund 141, Amendment Number Five. One item totaling $16,507.23, zero coming from fund balance.
I have a motion from Mr. Sis.
Second.
Second by Mr. Chambers, to recognize insurance reimbursement, reimbursement for this reckless, any discussion? Call roll, please.
Speaker Peter.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Lawrence Hodge.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Trevitt.
Aye.
Harry Sis.
Aye.
Charles Moncannon.
Aye.
Elsie Testor.
Aye.
Stephen Ray.
Aye.
Tom Bowers.
Aye.
Joanne Lincolnship.
Aye.
Charlie Baker.
Aye.
Bobby Dees.
Aye.
Ken Arden. Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonia Coler.
Aye.
Russell Cye.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
No.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Pat Hicks.
Aye.
And Robert Goff.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Next is a motion to approve General Purchase, General Purchase School Fund 141, Amendment Number Six. Has three items, zero coming from fund balance, which is to reallocate some funds within their budget.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sis, second by Ms. Brown, to recognize or to accept this budget amendment. Any discussion?
How much is the total?
How much total? Hundred and eighty-two thousand, one hundred, one hundred ninety-one, eighty-two.
Any other discussion?
Not coming from fund balance.
Any other discussion? I'll roll, please.
Peter Peters. Willie Campbell. Art Todd. Nancy Brown. Joel Street.
Because I'm employed in Clark County, I have conflict with Anderson, proposal about to be voted, however, part of my argument, my vote nature, only in my conscience, but to my obligation to my constituents and citizens, this body represents I.
Richard Winters. Ronnie Cribbitt. Mary Sis. Charles Von Cannon. Elsie Castor. Steve Morant. Tom Mallow. Joanne Lincolnship. Charlie Vegas. Bobby Deeds. Ian Arden. Steve Chambers. John Lewis. Sonia Cole. Russell Cott. Scott Sands. Bill Armstrong. Pat Hee. Robert Gollum.
All last, motion carries.
Uh, next item is a motion to approve General purpose school fund one forty-one, amendment number seven, with two items. Total of sixty-seven thousand, two hundred twenty-two dollars, ninety-six cents, zero coming from fund balance.
A motion by Mr. Sissick, second by Ms. Brown, to accept, uh, this budget amendment. Any discussion?
Where is these funds coming from? Is this in the budget for last year, Mr. Sissick?
Yes.
It was in the budget. These just transparent funds, right?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? I'll roll, please.
Peter Peters. Willie Campbell. Art Todd. Nancy Brown. Joel Street.
Because I'm employed in Clark County, I have conflict with Anderson, proposal about to be voted, however, part of my argument, my vote nature, only in my conscience, and to my obligation to my constituents and citizens, this body represents I.
Richard Winters. Ronnie Cribbitt. Mary Sis. Charles Von Cannon. Elsie Castor. Steve Morant. Tom Mallow. Joanne Lincolnship. Charlie Vegas. Bobby Deeds. Ian Arden. Steve Chambers. John Lewis. Sonia Cole. Russell Cott. Scott Sands. Bill Armstrong. Pat Hee. Robert Gollum.
All last, motion carries.
Next item, pardon me, is a motion to approve federal projects fund one forty-two, amendment five, two items. Total of sixteen thousand, eight oh two, thirty-five, zero coming from fund balance.
Motion by Mr. Sissick, second by Ms. Brown, uh, to approve, uh, budget amendment. Uh, any discussion? I'll roll, please.
Peter Peters. Willie Campbell. Art Todd. Nancy Brown. Joel Street.
Because I'm employed in Clark County, I have conflict with Anderson, proposal about to be voted, however, part of my argument, my vote nature, only in my conscience, and to my obligation to my constituents and citizens, this body represents I.
Richard Winters. Ronnie Cribbitt. Mary Sis. Charles Von Cannon. Elsie Castor. Steve Morant. Tom Mallow. Joanne Lincolnship. Charlie Vegas. Bobby Deeds. Ian Arden. Steve Chambers. John Lewis. Sonia Cole. Russell Cott. Scott Sands. Bill Armstrong. Pat Hee. Robert Gollum.
All last, motion carries.
Next item, a motion to approve federal projects fund one forty-two, amendment number six. Has two items, uh, sixty-seven thousand, six hundred twelve dollars, forty-three cents, zero coming from fund balance.
Motion by Mr. Sissick, second by Ms. Brown, to approve this budget amendment. Discussion.
Problem I have is this is the non-certified substitutes. City don't hire, as far as I know, from my research, do not hire non-certified substitutes. I think with the proof of education, if the county would change that policy.
Any other discussion? Please, I'll roll, please.
Peter Peters. Willie Campbell. Art Todd. Nancy Brown. Joel Street.
Because I'm employed in Clark County, I have conflict with Anderson, proposal about to be voted, however, part of my argument, my vote nature, only in my conscience, and to my obligation to my constituents and citizens, this body represents I.
Richard Winters. Ronnie Cribbitt. Mary Sis. Charles Von Cannon. Elsie Castor. Steve Morant. Tom Mallow. Joanne Lincolnship. Charlie Vegas. Bobby Deeds. Ian Arden. Steve Chambers. John Lewis. Sonia Cole. Russell Cott. Scott Sands. Bill Armstrong. Pat Hee.
Twenty-one hours, motion carries.
There's a next request came from landfill committee. They reserve the remainder of the operating transfer to be made to the solid waste fund to supplement the cash flow with the fund. So the motion is to approve the landfill operating transfer of seventy-one thousand, six hundred sixty dollars, ninety cents. Second.
Motion by Mr. Sissick, second by Mr. Street, to approve this, uh, amendment. Any discussion?
Yes, where, where's these funds coming from, Mr. Sissick?
They're, uh, in his budget.
They're in his budget?
Yes, this is.
And it wasn't taken out of your budget this year?
That's the remainder of the operating transfer that you approved at the beginning of the year.
Yeah, at the beginning of the year, but, uh, see, we had a hard time, our payroll for a long time. We couldn't even pay to get this health bills thing done.
That's correct.
And obviously, you can offer seventy-one thousand dollars, that was in the budget, and it's coming from the fund balance.
No, sir, no, sir, it's not coming from fund balance. It's coming from the general fund operating transfer that was established at the beginning of the year in your beginning budget in the general fund. It was recognized as a revenue in the solid waste fund. However, this is not an expenditure that is in his budget, it's for cash flow purposes only. He does not have the cash flow to meet payroll like you're talking about.
I know, but you, you've been saying, I think we have a cash flow problem, and you can't do this and that.
That's exactly right.
Say we got it.
No, sir, I'm saying we don't have it, that's why we're requesting the transfer. This is coming from the general fund one oh one, going to solid waste fund one sixteen, because solid waste does not have the cash to continue operations.
It does have its own line out, is that correct?
That's correct. It's not coming from fund balance.
Mr. Street. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I, I would risk, speak with speaker, we've been trying, working diligently to hang on to this money that was approved by this full commission at the beginning of last year. We've done without, and done without, but it's got to the point that he cannot survive with her without making this transfer. This is no new money, it was approved. Uh, it's, it's money that we made a decision a year ago to give to this operation, which I, let me say this, as chairman of this committee. Uh, Johnson County, everyone knows how much smaller they are. All they operate is a transfer station. They do nothing else. They have two, maybe three employees, and they give, uh, their transfer station in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. Then he's got eight or nine employees over there, he's got a bunch of worn-out equipment that he keeps together. So, uh, he's done an excellent job, this shouldn't be a question whatsoever. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion?
I'd like to repeat something, uh, Mr. Barris. This, uh, landfill is having ropes around our neck, and I'm not so sure that we can keep on operating this landfill. And I would like to see that we privatize it, let some private company run it, because the county don't think it'd be a landfill business. Another thing, the damn lease side is about to fill up, and what are you gonna do when that's filled up?
Mr. Chris.
Ron Cannon. There are obligations, whether you close the landfill or you don't close the landfill, whether you privatize it or you don't privatize. We must monitor the landfill for years, and that's got to be done by the county. Therefore, it's a service to the citizens, and Mr. Street is correct, it's nothing more than a transfer station. But, we've got to stay in the, we've got to stay in this business, because it is a service to the community.
Any other discussion? Mr. Gower.
Uh, I would approach with the idea of, they would like to see a pickup of waste material throughout the county, that they could put aside the road and have some way of picking that up and taking it to the waste area. And I suggested a long time ago that maybe, maybe we could afford to buy one of Johnson City's old recycling trucks. And maybe hire two part-time men, maybe twice enough, to go around and pick this stuff up. Now, I don't know whether we'll do it or not, but a lot of people should throw it away because they don't have no way of getting it to, back to the airport. And I can understand them, wanting to take one bag of, uh, plastic bottles down and leave it up in the garbage. So, I think we ought to look into that.
I'll roll, please.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cameron.
Talking of facilities, you know, this was trapped several years ago, some, probably some twenty-nine years ago, that was turned over by a park. Do this, we picked it up, and it ended up in the same mess that we're in right now. You know, it was getting charged double, and it'll be charged double for that. You know, it was costing us, we were getting set for the budget to pull that in, and it, and, uh, still, we run into the same problems right now. Had to pay double labor charges on vehicles, even though this way, eight trucks running, trying to pick this garbage up. It's just really, you know, hard to do. That's my point, we tried this long time before. I'm learning to do that.
Question of motion. I'll roll, please.
Peter Peters. Willie Campbell. Nancy Brown. Joel Street. Richard Winters. Ronnie Cribbitt. Mary Sis. Charles Von Cannon. Elsie Castor. Steve Morant. Tom Mallow. Joanne Lincolnship. Charlie Vegas. Bobby Deeds. Ian Arden. Steve Chambers. John Lewis. Sonia Cole. Russell Cott. Scott Sands. Bill Armstrong. Pat Hee.
Twenty-two hours, motion carries.
Uh, the next item is, uh, concerning the insurance renewal rates, uh, for employee's health insurance. And I asked, uh, Mr. Deloach if she would, uh, give us that, and then I'll make the motion to approve the fourteen fifteen premium rates from Blue Cross to Shield with an increase of five percent.
It kind of stole my thunder, and we've expected a large increase on health insurance this year. For the fourteen fifteen year, we were very fortunate to recognize a five percent increase. And this was mentioned in all the budget committee workshops, however, we did not obtain a vote. Today, we need to get a vote so that we can renew our insurance for the next year. It is five percent, um, and that's much lower than what we had anticipated.
That's the motion.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Sissick, second by Mr. Hodge, to approve the, uh, increase in health insurance. Any discussion?
Does this include the, uh, cost of two, this, all this going five percent?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
I'll roll, please.
Peter Peters. Willie Campbell. Art Todd. Nancy Brown. Joel Street. Richard Winters. Ronnie Cribbitt. Mary Sis. Charles Von Cannon. Elsie Castor.
Because I'm employed in Clark County, I have conflict with Anderson, proposal about to be voted, however, part of my argument, my vote nature, only in my conscience, and to my obligation to my constituents and citizens, this body represents I.
Steve Morant. Tom Mallow. Joanne Lincolnship. Charlie Vegas. Bobby Deeds. Ian Arden. Steve Chambers. John Lewis. I'm sorry, Josh.
No.
Russell Cott. Sonia Cole. Scott Sands. Bill Armstrong. Pat Hee. Robert Gollum.
Twenty-one hours, motion carries.
Okay, the next item, uh, comes by way of school board, they met Thursday. The budget committee had already met on Monday, and, uh, the request is about the land for the new school up here. They request, uh, two hundred thousand dollars from the referendum money to go to the purchase of the land. Uh, I believe there's two hundred and seventy thousand in the referendum fund at this time.
It's not, uh, accompanying, uh, the project itself.
Right, and you request two hundred thousand, so we go ahead to purchase. Problem could come that the land might get away, and there seems to be a, a good location. So they request this, and I, I'll make a motion that.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Sissick, second by Mr. Morant, to approve, uh, this two hundred thousand dollars from the referendum money for the schools. Any discussion? Ms. Brown.
When will the school, when is looking at to build the school, and how does the people in the community feel about the great schools being combined?
Uh, Mr. Board.
When is looking at to build a school, and how does the great schools in the community feel like, feel about being combined?
Well, we're talking about combining middle schools, by the way, and, uh, I think, you know, there's, uh, it's, it's very positive from the standpoint of finances, and it's very positive from the academic, uh, structure, uh, K fours, five eights, nine twelves. So, as far as I can, I think, you know, there's a pretty positive feeling about, uh, the, uh, as far as when, uh, today.
What about the community, how would they feel about it?
We've not heard anything negative about the situation. Everything I heard has been positive, and it's, it's high.
What about the money, we get the school board way back, buy land, and tell them to build a school, what happened to that?
Didn't get any, not even a, uh, didn't get any.
Some of that on the addition, you can't have that in a school.
But it was, it was there in the bar, built a studio.
Is your, is your mark. I didn't agree, and I found this whole location, so, uh, that's nothing was used along with, uh, some additional money to build the addition there, um, to make the hospital with classrooms and, uh, administration offices.
What about the land that you give the body to build out of course, it's still ours?
No, no, that, that land was never tapped into, no words, the bond expired. There's never really a bond, uh, taken out for any plant of other course, there's, uh, there's no land to be found at other course. So that bond and the timeline to, uh, I guess, issue a bond for that expired whenever they tapped into the bond, is that correct, Mr. Board?
The money was returned because the land was never purchased.
So the money, the money come back, and there was.
That's correct.
Thanks for the question. The asking price of seven point two acres is how much?
Two hundred thousand dollars.
How much?
Two hundred thousand dollars.
Per acre?
No, for the, uh, across states. That would be a problem. One of the reasons that, uh, the board unanimously voted for this is because they said a location, which is first and foremost, uh, I guess, when you're looking for land, where's still, location, location, location is important. It's on a five lane road, uh, for Langley, turning lane. It has the, uh, needed utilities, it has silver, which saves right off that approximately seven hundred thousand dollars according to the architect. He was having to do any, have seven hundred three, have to build beds. So it has silver, and it also has six inch waterline under the property, and it also will, uh, come, uh, with natural gas, which is an energy saver for the school system, uh, to tap into. So it's a, it's a very good location. We would like to have a couple more acres, but based on the design and the two level, uh, uh, design of the school and the way Mr. Street has placed it on the property, those of you that saw the diagram, it fits very well, and suits, uh, suits the needs very well. It's also sixteen, uh, six hundred. It's also a sixteen, uh, six hundred, uh, student-designed school, we could even look at adding to that, but that's still a hundred and fifty more students than one two K, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, the five eights, we're bringing into it. So it's a, it's, it's designed right now for a hundred and fifty more students that want to move into it.
And you have pointed out that part of that school is two-story, which is something we haven't done in years, it's been able to...
Two stories or a metal roof.
I pulled the D, it's not seven point two acres, Mr. Chair. Need to go back and look at that because it is not seven point two acres. So you're not being paid for something you're not getting.
That's what's advertised, uh, on the property, because for any transition or, uh, if that's action is made, we'll definitely look at that for a five acre.
But, but it is an excellent piece of land on a standpoint of infrastructure. You have natural gas there, so you can use natural gas infrared heat, which is a lot cheaper than electricity. You have a six inch water main for fire protection, which you wouldn't probably get anywhere else in the county. You do have, uh, naturally, good access. What you don't have, though, is parking for fourteen hundreds, fourteen hundred person seating area. So, that's, that's a critical thing, if you're going to have that many, that large a gymnasium, where are you going to park?
We don't have it come parking in Orange County, in any of the hospitals, which you want to have.
No, that's, uh, that's one that the other three locations, well, the other locations where we have fourteen hundred seats, and Mall of Hampton, we don't have that in Port Swat City. The architect told me that if not any school you decide, you never have enough parking for, uh, athletic, uh, functions.
There's still a park on the highway up there. Yeah. Right down the highway. But how many, if this goes through, what was, how many, uh, Monty versus...
This will eliminate twenty-four of forty-eight hospitals that we currently have, that all the children are going out. That's not quite half, but it's a good, it's a big chunk, and a good value for it.
That really helps us out, and then twenty, yours, probably, on some of them.
This will also benefit three schools and three different communities, about Unack, Hanover, and Kingborough.
Where are you saving it? This is saving the county, five guys and all this, how much you figured that saving the county right now?
Saving the county with this project?
Yeah, just having the water lines and the gas and all that's already burning.
Well, like I said, with the sewer up front, it's a one-time savings, it's about seven hundred thousand dollars, that's just on the project, cost itself. But, uh, just building a new building, there would be basically very little, uh, maintenance, uh, heat, with the exception of the day-to-day, uh, heat, and some of those things. So, from maintenance standpoint, from, uh, policies, it would save us several thousands of dollars.
Ask a question.
I'm clerk.
The maintenance too, you know, you're going to shut down one maintenance, I want to know.
Have a question, I'm...
Mr. Peter.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Lance Martin.
Aye.
Joel Street.
I'm clerk, I'm the board of the board, I am the conflict negotiator, I'm the party argument, I'm the vote nation, I'm the consensus, I'm the guest, I'm the constituent. And citizens as body represents, aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Krieger. I'm sorry, Ron.
Aye.
Ronnie?
Richard Krieger. Say it, aye.
Harry Sis.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Again.
Elsie Castor.
Aye.
Steve Ray.
Aye.
Tom Allen.
Aye.
Joanne Lankinship.
Aye.
Charlie Davis.
Aye.
Bobby Dees.
Aye.
Ian Arden. Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonny Carter.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Patty.
Aye.
And Robert Ross.
All eyes, motion carry.
Okay, the last thing I have is, we've had some questions concerning the state of the debt service. So I have asked, uh, Mr. Loach to give us an explanation so that everyone gets on some page and understands where we are and what's happening. That's all we have.
Thank you, Mr. Sis. Mr. Loach.
Um, as I've warned you for the past couple of years, there will be a school that we have to build in the very near future. So I cautioned you as to taking money from the debt service fund. And today, we are at that point, you've already approved for them to purchase land, so that will be the next thing that comes. Your debt service fund has been insufficiently funded for the past two years. Um, we took it out of our fund balance to cover different expenses, um, within the general fund, we had expenses for the sheriff's department to open the jail and to hire staff. Instead of increasing taxes, we took money out of the debt service to cover that. Basically, we had a savings in debt service that we had accumulated over time, so if we did have to build a school, that would be taken care of, and we wouldn't have to put it on the tax rate. We continued to take out of debt service to cover the general fund and keep it from increasing the taxes on the taxpayers. So today, we are about one point eight million dollars insufficiently funded. And what that means is our revenues are short of our expenditures. In the thirteen fourteen year, we did have two notes to come off, one was for the animal shelter, and one has been commonly referred to as the cloudbun note. And those roughly totaled about nine hundred thousand dollars in payments. So we started the year one point eight million dollars in the red, we had nine hundred thousand come off, so we are still over nine hundred thousand in the hole for debt service. So I have heard, um, fourteen cents needs to be put back on, we need to keep fourteen cents, we need to do this, we need to do that. We are already in the hole. Your total funding for debt service for the thirteen fourteen year was fourteen and a half cents. You should have been at about twenty-eight to thirty. So I just caution you, um, the full commission will approve the budget for the debt service, they'll approve the tax rate. I caution you, please pay attention to debt service and make sure that you have it adequately funded. Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Loach. Uh, I'll proceed. Numerous requests for short recess, and we'll do that right now. Uh, we'll, we'll come back to your order. Uh, Mr. Bettles had the lead, he's not feeling well, and, uh, he had to go home. We all wish him our best. And we'll continue on with the community reports, uh, financial management committee.
But, uh, I think that it needs to be reviewed on the commission.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, building and grants committee. I think it's, it's working on the, the report for this time. Thank you. Uh, highway committee.
Don't have any questions.
Excuse me, Mr. Peter. So we have to go on this, uh, uh, Dave, go deep God rail and foggy areas, and the whole week you have to go on that, Peter, just getting this part this long?
No, uh, Jack, he's, he'll get some estimates, I wanted to ask to do that, and then he was saying to me, hey, if this is...
The highway parks, that's, that's right. Yeah.
It's up to Jack to get the estimates, and find out what the house is wanting to do. I don't know if it's a house, it's what we, so we do.
I didn't, I, I, the most important, uh, the technique, the load, the management, that you want to offer.
No, it's got to be, no, it can't do this.
Uh, it's about for Jack to get the assistance, and see if he had any of his budget, if he wanted to extend this money. You want that?
Sure.
If you want to say I'm not taking the, not driving the post, you got, I can see that, uh, all right. Let's move on. Health and Fire Committee.
Yeah, just to record this one.
Education Committee.
I have left the report, and I look back, you know, you're making a good vote, and I'd like you to support your statement.
Thank you, uh, Rudy Bowles Committee, Mr. Criv.
No, but I'll have some, some hold on, Mr. Perry.
We're all waiting.
I know you're looking forward.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, Land Jumper Committee.
No report, just, uh, thank the commission for the transfer of, uh, funds.
Law Enforcement Committee. No report this time, and thank you, the winner. Uh, Plant Commission, uh, Mr. Church, we have something else to...
We have one item that's, uh, that's before the Plant Commission last minute, which was a proposed cell tower, a new tower for Verizon Wireless, open on Miami Drive, on West End of Park Stadium. Um, it passed through the Plant Commission, most of the Plant Commissioners have been out to the side looking at it, myself and Chris have also been out to the side, uh, there's no problems, you got detailed set of drawings right there in front of you, if you got any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. And do we have a representative of Verizon here tonight? I guess I didn't show up, but, uh, but this is the representation from the Plant Commission, this is, uh, you know, it's, uh, the building permit, top on New Cell Tower, Park Stadium's ten thousand dollars, they sent in a check about two months ago, and the plans to review them, you know, it didn't happen last month, so that's why they came for you last month, but it has been approved by the Department of State.
Mr. Loos?
It's ten thousand dollars, I have a lot of future concerns, that we have to Fokie her, is that like that, sale of tire service. What we have to do, uh, to, uh, lower this cost for these cell towers, I think ten thousand dollars for most, uh, we just lucky to get one, but it did got ten years if we had one, uh, what we have to do to get this, uh, down to a reasonable cost, maybe more will come in, uh, these rural areas and set up a cell tower.
Well, I don't think the ten thousand dollar permit is an obstacle for these cell phone captains to...
No, that's very minimal cost compared to other, uh, pay spread.
They also, they react on, to their property, they're set up, and it's quite, quite high, that's, that's not an obstacle for them to come in here.
What I believe it would be, if you get the five, five stand one, that the board would come in.
Well, I'm sure if they get it through, they'd flock in here much, for good.
That's what I thought. Put seven people in.
But that's not really an issue for, for them, they, ten thousand dollars to swap around.
No, that's money that goes right into the car, so it's, uh, not a lot, but it happens a lot.
Well, can, how many have we had built up in the last ten years, and it's still something?
About ten years, this is the first one we've had, in the last five years.
Oh, no.
Because their, all their mainly is still a couple locations.
Okay, thanks, sir.
About the ten thousand dollars, that's, that's pretty cheap.
I make a motion, you take it, Mr. Church's recommendation.
I'll say.
I have a motion by Mr. Chambers, seconded by Mr. Cott, to accept, uh, recommendation from Mr. Church to locate this cell phone tower on, uh, around Miami Drive, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Has Johnson City been involved, or is Johnson City free agency, says it's in their...
Free agency, they would pack the date, so we never submit the document, and that was, uh...
That's not in our group?
Uh, maybe not, no.
Mr. Vortek.
Will this be used for Verizon exclusion there, can they sublet?
They can, uh, you know, sub out, no co-location.
Because if it's not for exclusion only, you might preclude getting another tower from another company, because they will sublet on the same tower. So I would caution against a contract that, that allowed other subletting on the same tower, just Verizon only, because if you don't, you, you preclude maybe getting another cell tower from another company.
You know, it just has to meet our ordinances, and there's footage is all back, you know, so close to, from one tower to another.
Question? What a question on those, uh, call girls.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Art Todd.
Aye.
Lisa Brereton.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Crivian.
I'm trying to make up my mind. I'll vote no.
Mary Sees.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Kestrel.
Aye.
Steve Ray.
Aye.
Tom Mallow.
Aye.
Joyne Lincoln-Chip.
Aye.
Charlie Vegas.
Aye.
Bobby Dees.
Aye.
Ian Arne. Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonny Fowler.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sands, uh, Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Pat Heath.
Aye.
Robert Raul.
Aye.
Madam Clerk, I'll change my vote here.
All eyes, motion carries. Have overlooked any committee, the committee report. Very well, I'll give to Karen Turner's report.
The Parks and Rec Private Act passed, passed the state legislature, we're waiting, has been signed by the governor, we're waiting to receive back the documents from Secretary of State, we can ratify that before this board. Correspondence was advanced to the city of Elizabeth in pursuit of the instruction of the commission last month to, uh, explore the idea of a joint firework resolution, as brought by Mr. Lewis. We did receive a couple of new litter complaints this month from the planning office, we will file for litigation, we'll have a meeting later this week, either later today or Tuesday, get some details now down on Certified Mail Service, make sure we're okay to file those. They're in the same area, and we have a third one that looks like it's getting ready to come up as well. We are working with Attorney Roger Davis of Elizabeth, and for some modifications on the Carter County, Elizabeth Animal Shelter Agreement, a couple of modifications needed by their auditors, nothing of substance, but it's just some, some house cleaning on that agreement. Looking to sell a couple of additional pieces of excess property, I will not put that on Mr. Loach and Dr. Budget, but we should be rolling that sometime, and just write return of the budget here, so that we, uh, don't put more on you than you can stand right now, I know what you're going through and how busy you are. We did get a couple of calls, or I got a couple of calls from some schools, some potential road closing, I directed those to the Highway Committee, to make sure that those things are addressed before it comes back to me and explained to them, but typically, Highway Committee requires the citizens to receive a survey, and then once a potential alleyway or old alleyway that was never opened is closed, that land is divided exactly equally unless the, uh, citizens have some sort of agreement otherwise. We did receive a new workers comp claim in the sheriff's office, and that was being advanced from a carrier. We have word of an order coming down to dismiss one case currently from an inmate against our sheriff's office and the county as a whole, and once I got that order in place next month, I'll report on that, should be nice to get rid of one of the pieces of litigation. Completed some research this month itself for the Circuit Court Clerk's Office concerning distress warrants and some issues that had arose from out of town collection firms, and we completed that research, and we got that handled for them this month. Completed some research for Civil Service Board concerning potential change, advanced that out. This is some of the Civil Service rules, the, that board does, ponga its own rules and regulations, once it's put in place. We completed TDEC, uh, grant through the mayor's office, which went, uh, pretty urgent, I would, I'd say, that, well, we start on about twelve o'clock on a Friday, and worked straight through to we got it done, and it looks like the mayor may be able to report on that next month to pursue some funds for the county. Visited a potential drainage issue and waterbed issue in the Dallas subdivision area, as a result of a new subdivision may have pushed some water over on some citizens in their homes. We looked at potential ways to explore this without having to use a shovel, at this point, with some cameras and things like that, and that's something I'll be reporting back to the Highway Committee. We did go and visit the property, but right now, it's a merit pulling flats and centers even the county can even do, based upon unlimited right of way in that area. We are pulling those, and I've been working with that citizen, and keeping them informed of where we're at, so they know that we are working on, trying to look into it further. We had an employee issue from the animal shelter, and we rendered legal opinions to employee status on that, and then we have an issue that I'll be advancing to Dr. Ward, as well as to, uh, uh, both, uh, Dr. Ward, as well as Attorney Banks, and that concerns liquor by the drink funds that Carter County may be entitled to from City of Elizabeth, and it's something that's become a pretty big issue in Washington County from Jonesboro and Johnson City, I know that Ms. Ingraham's already worked on that some, and advanced this document, it's over. Uh, the legislature is probably the most fluid situations I've ever saw, as far as a money's owed by a city to a county, or to a school board, actually, and the legislature amending the, the statute to control that almost on a daily basis, amendments were floating through the last day of the legislature, which changed that legislation almost daily, and, and if suit's filed soon, then, then that allows the county an opportunity to collect here at home, if not, there's always the opportunity, out of the new legislature, arbitration or suit in Nashville, obviously, we'd rather see that stay here, that's something I want to advance, and, uh, get that over to our school, and let them look at that, and see if there's some money they can collect. Like I said, probably one of the most complex and fluid litigation situations I've ever saw, is the statute literally shifting, and sand was changing under our feet daily.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Uh, Mr. Byers, uh, I want to thank Mr. Byers, and Mr. Schiller, the planning department over there, coming, taking care of that house on the River Bottom Road, in Valley Forge, uh, the community, deeply appreciate what y'all did, thank you so much for getting back to you, and having consented and been asked for, been on the list for a few years, and we've been trying to get it done, and it looks a lot better, appreciate our hard work and, and, thank you.
Thank you. For everybody's general information, we received a letter of resignation from a Assistant Coroner, Mr. Jim Burrow, and we'll be, uh, appointing one of those in the near future. Any other, Mr. Thomas? Motion to adjourn.
So be it.
I'll say.